Okay, I will call this March 14th council meeting to order. And I would like to acknowledge that we're holding this meeting on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Let's all stand for the singing of O Canada.
(Singing) O Canada, our own and native land. True patriot love in all our scum and. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, everyone's here. Declaration of conflict of interest, anyone? Okay, approval of agenda, the recommended motion as is as it is. Thank you, Councilor Hatfield and Councilor Lesser, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Okay, we have minutes, approval of minutes, Town Council, February 13th, please. Deputy Mayor, Councilor Hatfield, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Special Town Council, February 19th. Councilor Lesser, Councilor LaCua, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you. And Committee of the Whole, February 27th, please. Councilor Cleveland, Deputy Mayor, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much. So we don't have a public hearing. Okay, business arising, so the recommended motion under 10A for solid waste is that council pass second reading to amend section 7.0D of the Solid Waste Resource Bylaw. Okay, Councilor Hatfield and Councilor Lesser, any discussion on this one? We're good? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. And then we have new business. So the first one is a request for a decision for appointment of Code of Conduct investigator. I'm glad we got to this point. Recommended motion is that council appoint Virchell Wickwire-Bryson LOP with principal solicitors Noella Martin and Mark Dunning as the Code of Conduct investigators for the town of Yarmouth. So moved and seconded, discussion. Okay, go ahead, deputy.
Just for public awareness, I believe that this is just so when an issue does happen, it's not done in-house. It allows us to be, you know, hands-free of whatever issue it is and it can be investigated properly. I believe the province may have mandated this or...
We did.
Yeah, so, yeah, just so the public's aware, this is just if something comes up, it'll be handled properly from an outside agency and it'll come back to us as it should.
So that, that's right, so that investigation goes out to the investigator. They decide if it is feasible or not. And if it's feasible, they will do the investigation, full investigation, it'll come back to council for that decision. And the reason, the reason we put that in there is because council members do know who's at the table. So we may be aware that something has caused somebody's behavior and that was, that was important to us when we put this together. So, go ahead, Councilor Lesser, please.
Just wondering if, Your Worship, how many municipalities are, like, are they finding people within their community? Like, I like the fact that we're not using somebody local because there could be a conflict of interest, which they would have to declare, but do we know how many municipalities have, have found somebody at a local level?
Nope, there's still, everyone's still looking. And I can ask that question, certainly, I can probably ask it in the next couple of weeks. There, you have to be very careful. And I, I know that, for example, I mean, Mr. Barrow would be out of the question for us, but because of so many dealings in a, especially in a small town, with legal action, wherever it is, on different matters, I think, you know, a lot of folks would have to step back. So I'm glad that we hired outside of, of there as well. And some municipalities may opt to come together and, and do the same thing, just to make sure that everyone in the region is under the same, they're under the same rules and regulations, but under that same person. Okay, Councilor Hatfield?
Oh, thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to point out that Virchell Wickwire-Bryson are amongst a list of lawyers that have been approved either by the, by AMANS and NSFM, but, but there is a list of approved adjudicators that has been identified, so that, so that municipalities are not left out on their own, trying to figure out who might be able to conduct this kind of investigation. Thank you.
I hope we don't have to conduct any investigations. Go ahead, Councilor Cleveland.
Yes, do I, thank you, Your Worship. My question actually links back to that. What were the circumstances? Was it a request for proposals in terms of getting him hired or this, this group hired, I guess is more accurate?
I think it was AMANS, because as President of NSFM, I might, I might be aware of that. But AMANS would have gone out and just asked who was interested.
(inaudible)
Yeah, yeah. So it was, I don't know if they'd have to fully matrix that, but they would have put those details in, so it, it would be appropriate. Okay, did we, where are we, did we vote on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you. Okay, 11B, we've got the climate risk assessment and prioritize adaptation plan. So this is more simple than it looks, but the recommended motion is that whereas the town of Yarmouth has the following interest: to create a world-class dynamic, dynamic hazard risk and vulnerability assessment using cutting-edge technology, and to create a prioritized risk-based climate adaptation plan that reflects the unique characteristics of our municipality, and to ensure the diversity of our people, our economy, our culture, and our environment are protected through risk-informed planning, operations, and emergency management, and to complete the above with no capital nor ongoing costs, and to do so in a manner that enables discretionary sharing with other municipalities, so as to explore common experiences and adaptation opportunities that build tomorrow's resilience today. And whereas the town of Yarmouth seeks to undertake a climate risk assessment and prioritize adaptation plan for the town of Yarmouth in coordination with 13 other municipalities across Nova Scotia and Newfoundland and Labrador, all of whom are partnering with McAllister and Craig Disaster Management, for highly technical project elements and technical expertise, be it resolved that council direct staff to apply for a funding opportunity from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Local Leadership for Climate Adaptation Initiative for a climate risk assessment and prioritized adaptation plan for the town of Yarmouth. Moved. Councilor LaCua, seconded. Discussion on this one? So basically, this is Remo going after and we just have to okay for Remo to go after this, this funding, which is great that they're taking care of it, and the number of municipalities obviously are Remo partners.
That was my question, Your Worship, thank you. So, so we are the, we become the, the sponsoring body that, that goes after the funding, but it is in, it's in cooperation with, with our Remo partners?
Yes. So because Remo represents all of us, they can just do it with their name on it?
Perfect, thank you.
But list our municipalities. So, okay, all right, moved and seconded, any more questions, comments, anything? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, it'll be good to have that done. 11C, so the tender results. It's recommended that council award the tender for the collection of SOAR separated municipal solid waste to Rolex Trucking Limited for $2,831,679.30 plus HST. Moved and seconded, discussion. Go ahead, deputy.
Just for, once again, for public awareness, this is for a five-year contract, I believe. There was three bidders, we took the lowest one at around 550 a year, all others were around 850,000 or more. So although this is a huge number, for those that bid, this is the lowest, and this is to cover us for five years for this. So just more of an information statement than anything.
It's not cheap to collect solid waste. You're good? Okay. Any more discussion on this? I know we have the big discussions at Committee of the Whole, but I think we're covered. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thanks, folks. Okay, reports, council advisory committee, so Deputy Mayor, you want to take the Committee of the Whole? Go ahead.
A recommended motion that council approve the write-off list for 2025 totaling 5,086.24.
So moved, seconded, any discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, just quickly for everybody's information, that that list covers a period of over three years, so it's not like 5,000 this last month.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, deputy?
Recommended motion that council make no changes to the truck route bylaw as recommended by staff.
So moved, and then seconded, any discussion on this one? So we're just going through the bylaws one at a time and as they come? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to investigate signage and/or painting yellow lines on Main Street at the corners of Ellis and Chester Street to indicate no parking zones.
Okay, seconded, moved and seconded, discussion. That one's blueberry, up around blueberry fields, there's a lot of congestion. So painting lines might just be the easiest way to help folks understand where they can park and where they can't. Okay, any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you.
Recommended motion that council send a letter to Yarmouth Regional Hospital, copying the province requesting an update on the frequency of 911 calls coming from the hospital.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion on this one?
This, once again, comes from, I believe, when you push a number or something, it automatically dials and they're getting a lot of in-house calls that aren't really nothing, that just go to the RCMP and take up time, and it's been ongoing for quite a while, I believe, so.
So, yeah, the RCMP has to react to any 911 call, and when you hit that out button to get out of the hospital, it's a nine, and then somehow it's 911. So, so, yeah, and when they respond, they have to stay there until it's sorted out. So it's hours of policing that, that we don't want to have that happen with. Go ahead there, Councilor.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's been, I think, almost a year since we first raised this issue and brought it to the attention of the VP for Western Region at NS Health. And just to reiterate, this is costing us a fair amount of money as a, as a municipal unit. We pay for policing, and when our police are tied up on calls that are of, basically bogus calls or, or not real emergencies, it takes them away from their police business. And I'm, I just, I think it's important to, I don't, I can't remember the percentage, but a year ago when we brought this to council, the percentage of, of 911 calls that they are responding to in a quarter that are coming from the hospital is staggering, like 66% or something. It's just staggering. So this is not a nominal concern, this is serious concern and it really needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for that. The, the policing is the highest on our budget and it's, it's by far. And so we're always shorthanded because of the contract we have, and they do their best, but, but to lose hours to have to react is, is just wrong. So hopefully we'll sort that out. Okay, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Recommended motion that council approve the Yarmouth International Airport inter- municipal agreement as presented.
So moved.
I'll say.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
Long time coming.
Long time coming, glad to have that signed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to engage a consultant for salary review for members of council.
Moved, I have a seconder, moved and seconded, discussion.
So once again, for public information, this is not saying that we will have a raise, it's to compare us to like municipalities around Nova Scotia, just to see where everything fits, and then it will come back and from that data, anything that would be moved on would be from there, but this is not committing to anything outside of the information process.
And we've not done this in the 12 years I've been here. So 12 years without even looking at it is not a good thing. Councilor Lesser?
It's that sober second thought sometimes, I guess, that we have in between, I won't be supporting this, but, and I, and the main reason is to hire a consultant to, to look at wages, it's going to cost us money. And I'm not, I wouldn't be in favor of increasing the salary. So to go through the processes, and I know, I know we have a, we have a remuneration, remuneration policy that actually seems better than most municipalities that I can see, which is Consumer Price Index every year. So, I mean, I guess it would be interesting to see what the results are, but I just, I won't be, I won't be supporting it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, go ahead.
Recommended motion that council pass first reading of, or to amend section 3.1 of the SOAR charges bylaw.
Okay, so moved, I have a seconder. Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Recommended motion that the town of Yarmouth indicate its intent to opt out of a contractual agreement with circular, circular materials to coordinate education and curbside collection for packaging and paper blue bags as part of the extended producer responsibility program.
Moved and seconded, discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
Recommended motion that council grant $500 for a thank you gift to Linda Gallagher and Lori Sigbertson.
Moved and seconded. And this was, this was on, on the radar for quite some time, not just since they've not been on the committee.
And this would be for their work as Chair and Vice Chair of the Mariners' Management Board, and as someone who sits on that committee, I've seen the hours that they put in. It's a volunteer position and they did a lot to, to right the ship, and I think very much deserving, and our partner municipalities are also doing the same. So I think it speaks to the work they, they do, they've done, and continue to do for this community. So a big thank you to them, and I think maybe a thank you letter included in that would probably be great as well.
Good. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried.
And recommended motion that council support the work of NSFM in advocating for Nova Scotia municipalities to be at the table with provincial legislation and policymakers when legislation that affects municipality is being contemplated, and that the mayor has autonomy to sign a letter expressing support of the NSFM in representing the needs of municipalities that support municipal autonomy, strong decision-making, and municipal engagement.
You have to repeat it if you're going to second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. You guys challenged me that the last time. Okay, you good, deputy? Okay, citizen advisory, we've got planning, you had nothing there?
No.
No, that's, that's different. Okay, waterfront, do you want to take that? Councilor Cleveland?
(inaudible).
Lesser? Oh, I was thinking the watershed. Yep. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Recommended motion that council appoint Tina Dontruman to the Waterfront Advisory Committee.
Okay, so moved, I have a seconder, Councilor LaCua, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you. Communities in Bloom, go ahead, Councilor Dares.
I'm moved that council support an application to host the Communities in Bloom National Symposium in 2027.
Second now.
Moved and seconded.
And just as a comment, and I suppose a caution or a warning, that typically when you have an event of this nature, they'll be looking for financial support in 2027 as well, so heads up that there will be requests down the road.
Go ahead, deputy.
Shortly after being elected, this, this was your last time, and I can say it was like a world-class event, walking into the Mariner Center and having it look like it looked, the buzz around the town with all the people, just bringing awareness to our town and our area and everything it has to offer. I forget the, the different places around the world that kind of kicked in and said, you know, how impressed they were, were known to put on a great show, and I think it'd be awesome if this came back once again and Yarmouth showcased, you know, as we always do.
Go ahead, Councilor Lesser.
I missed yesterday's meeting, but it, I've never seen a committee of volunteers so excited to be sitting at, like, what a, what an amazing group. They're, they're very eager to make the town better, and they're not just, you know, committee members, they're actually out doing the work. But it's incredible to see, and they're not just people from town either. It's incredible to see the passion they have for the work they're doing, so.
Councilor Cleveland?
The event itself is hugely significant, it was last time. It was a real honor to be a part of it then, and I still have friends in Slovenia, in Ireland, Italy, because of this, and they still talk glowingly of the event itself and the area generally. That kind of thing is huge, especially these days, and so I can't support it enough. Thank you.
Yeah, I completely agree. And, you know, I've actually reached out to the mayor over there in Ireland, because I had questions. They were doing something, because it pops up on my feed, and we can still, we can still have those conversations with people around the world, which is great.
If I may add something, actually, we're, as you probably are aware, some of the work that I'm doing within my own job is with the, with trails, with the rail trails, and a program called Get Sidetracked with the Western Ren, and we have a connection with a similar event, or not event, but a similar program that's being done, and that link is from Ireland, and it's, that link is because of these kind of situations where you get people from all over together comparing their different programs. And so it's, it's kind of amazing to see, and you've, you've said it yourself in some of the stuff that you've done just recently, first, the fact that many of the problems and issues you're dealing with is being dealt with by everyone.
Oh, yeah.
And also that ability to get together, to, to compare notes, to compare ideas and innovations, those kind of relationships are, they're not valuable to put money to them, they're priceless. Those kind of, that kind of what I call extreme partnerships are what, that's going to, you know, continue to grow this area, and so it's, it's huge.
I love that the world sees that.
Well, thank you. And I think it's important for people to note as well that, that Communities in Bloom, much like the facade program downtown wasn't about paint, Communities in Bloom is not about flowers. This year, the, the committee has applied for and have been accepted to compete internationally, having won a national award last year. And some of the things that are being included in the application, in the competition, are things like the recreation complex that's being, or campus that's being constructed at the Mariner Center property, things like the reuse center that's being offered this spring at the Solid Waste Park, those kind of things that, that make our community a better place to live. So it's not about flowers, and we're hopeful that people put on their thinking caps and think, okay, well, what else is going on around here that, that we can include in this application? But we feel very strongly that, that we can compete internationally, and, and having applied and been accepted, we're, we're excited to see the process happen. So the judges will probably be here in July, and we'll be ready for them. But again, it's not about flowers, and it's, it's about the entire community and, and what we do with it. So, thank you.
Thanks for that. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Accessibility Committee? Is that Councilor Lesser, one of you two? Do you want to take that?
Yeah. Recommended motion that council adopt the accessibility plan refreshed 2025 to 2028.
Okay, moved, seconded, and go ahead.
Just a comment on the work that has gone into it, it's, it was developed, as well as the equity, diversity, and inclusion policy, it's, it's really well done, I think Mike had quite a bit to do with that as well, Emirial, but it's, it's designed to read at a grade four level, and I think, I think, I actually think I heard a couple of you talking before the meeting.
You were, yeah.
I think we need to look at more of our policies to, to meet that standard, and having something that looks nice, you want to pick up and read it. So it's, it's, it's simple. Actually, it was funny at the meeting, when we were passing this, everybody was like, I think I'm missing something, like, there's, it's too, it's too easy of a read. But I think we get used to, we get used to having stuff that's so buried in, in words that we don't really understand, and this is a, to me, this plan is a, a very easy read.
Isn't that part of accessibility when you think of it? Just the ability for everybody to just read it and understand it? Because how many ti, I don't know about you, sometimes I read reports three times because you, it gets so detailed, so that's great. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for making that comment, and I remember sitting at that table and suggesting that illiteracy is also a disability and one that needs to be addressed locally. So that's, that's a good comment, thank you.
So important. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Hatfield.
I just wanted to make the observation as a journalist that the most difficult thing to do is to write concise and clearly, you know, because baffle gab is available, I mean, it's, it's there in writing as much as it is in, in our, our spoken discourse, and I just think that Accessibility Advisory Committee report is, it's just a masterwork. It's perfect. It's just perfect. I, I just commend everybody that was involved with it because I, yeah, good, just wonderful. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried, thank you. Okay, so we have reports for information there. We can go through if there's any questions, you can reach out to whoever is the, or if you have any questions now, by all means. We're good? Okay, Mayor's Report. I suppose I can, I guess that could be under, you sure can. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, it occurs to me, we, we had a special meeting of the Yarmouth International Airport Corporation yesterday. The purpose of the meeting was to review this report, which was done by Explorer Solutions, and this is some of the work that's been done by the task force. The report contains 31 recommendations, and the 31 recommendations were analyzed yesterday, they were prior, scored and prioritized, so we're moving ahead with, with some of those, and there'll be some, some requests from members of council to reach out to contacts, because we want to rebuild the, we want to build a better and stronger task force. But anyway, it's pretty exciting to be moving forward. Yeah.
I think that's an understatement. I think you're tickled pink. Go ahead, Councilor Cleveland.
If I may, throw you to Councilor Dares, is that, that report available to be read yet, or is it, is it going to be published?
It is.
I warn you that it's lengthy.
Looks big.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's, it's quite a read. But of course, I can, I can forward the report to you in, the reason I get a hard cop, got a hard copy printed was because, quite honestly, trying to navigate through a, a report of that thickness and all the amendments... and all the amendments or all the attachments that went with it, it was just a nightmare. But yeah, it contains some great information and yeah, I'll get that to you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, did we, we didn't have to motion that? Any more questions for committee chairs? We're good? Okay, Mayor's Report, I can report on, I can report on the trip if you want to hear that, I suppose there's some folks that haven't. So very quickly, FCM reached out before, before a delegation was heading to Washington to talk about the tariffs and the, how it was going to affect basically both of us. So ours, just to be clear, there were three mayors from across Canada chosen, I was honored to be one of them, and our mandate was basically to go to Washington, go to the NLC, which is the National League of Cities Conference, there were between 28 and 3,000, 2,800 and 3,000 delegates there, so Republicans, it's, it's different from here, your mayors are mostly voted, they're voted through parties, so Republican mayors and Democratic mayors. They were all there and it was our job to basically say, this is going to hurt us both, the tariffs, and to help them understand that it, it doesn't matter which way it runs, whether it's ours, our counter tariffs or, or theirs coming our way, it's going to hurt us both. And we explained that in, in as much detail as we could to help them understand, and of course you all know at this table better than anyone, when, when you're sitting at a table like this, it's hard to keep track and dig deep on the issues that we would, just as generally as a people say, you know what, that's tariffs, that's high level, that's, that's federal or that's provincial, and to dig deep and understand it to the degree that we need to, to say to the people of our communities, this is how it's going to affect you. And we also know, sitting at these tables, that it's really difficult to get any movement on anything unless the people understand and the people are explaining that to maybe their MLA here, their state officials there, so that they can go up the line and have those conversations with the, with the respective federal governments. So that was the job there. I got to take part in the economic development session and then I was a speaker with the mayor of Quebec for the finance, intergovernmental relations, a couple other things on that long name, but we presented there and it's funny, you could tell, you could tell who was in that room, you could tell if it was heavy Democratic or heavy Republican, I landed the heavy Republican, I think that's okay, that's probably why they sent me. And, you know, I have to say, it was well received, there was a lot of, we're really, really sorry, apologies, one-on-one, folks stood up in the audience and just said, we are so sorry. I was very clear, the first thing I said was, you know what, we love Americans, you're our friends, you're our neighbors, you're our allies, you have been forever, and we don't want that to change. And it's, and they kept saying, we're so sorry, and my response was always, but we're sorry too, because we know it's not all of you, it's, it comes from one place and it's landing on, on all of us on the ground and, and we're having to deal with it. So we covered, we covered things, like how is it going to affect them over there? So we hit, we were talking about Wisconsin earlier, I don't know, some, I think you might have mentioned Wisconsin, somebody did at the table, but, you know, heavy agriculture industry over there, so we do, out of Saskatchewan, I believe 90% of the potash that goes to them for their fertilizer comes out of Saskatchewan, 10% comes from the United States itself. So trying to help them understand that with the counter tariffs, if, where are you going to get this? Like it's, it's March, it's farming season, and if all of this is coming together, it's going to really affect the agriculture industry right across the United States. So the harm done there. And then I actually got to listen to the mayor of West Hollywood and she was talking, of course, about the wildfires in California and the devastation that happened there, so think, I'm no expert in this, but think softwood lumber, like, and, and with the president saying, we don't need their lumber, well, okay, then you can use second grade, because in Canada, the lumber, because of how it grows or our temperatures or whatever it is, it's more, you know what, denser, it's denser, so it's better softwood lumber than they would get in their country. So yeah, you do need us. There was a lot of questions around power, some folks stood up from Michigan to ask, are you, because of Rob Ford, are you really going to shut off the power? And the answer was, we don't, we don't want to, but if the lights go out in Michigan, you know, at least they're not out in Georgia, but if the lights go out in Michigan, you know, that's, that's what we have to do. The message was, you know, I spoke with the premier before I left, I just want to be on the same page with messaging, but he can go over there and the, and the prime minister can go over and, and have the, the really difficult, not that our conversations weren't difficult, but they're going to say things differently from what we were, we were trying to do, it was, Gil would be thrilled, it was fully diplomatic and it was to help them understand that we care about you and we care about us, we have to look after our country, just like you would, and, and it was, it was really, really well received, I think they understood, once we started talking about, you know, the, the softwood and, you know, housing, the, the tariffs on all those things, that the price of just a regular bungalow is going to go up $21,000, that's the numbers we have, are, just a normal, everyday car is going to go up by about $3,000, and think, think about the automobile industry, it's back and forth, Canada and the US, like they're, they're back and forth sometimes, six or seven times on, on parts, tires, you know, electri- electronics, all those things, and every time it crosses over, you get another, you get the tariffs. So it's not going to be a $10 increase, it's, it's in the thousands. So everything, everything's affected there. On the municipal level, because we were talking with mayors from one end of the US to the other, infrastructure development, nothing new to us, and I think, I think when I was speaking, I mentioned the Mariner Centre. You can't build a Mariner Centre unless you know what it's going to cost, and we have been doing this for how many years? So it, it just affects budgeting, it affects everything there, municipal fleets, machinery, we just bought two brand new buses. We want to be thankful that we bought those buses when we did, because I do believe they came out of the US, we couldn't get them here. The, the one thing that everybody talked about the most was housing, housing projects, and I'm going to tell you, for three days, everything I sat and heard was exactly the same issues we're dealing with, exactly the same issues, you know, housing and how do we get more money to do things and funding. A lot of folks were bluntly quit, they were afraid to speak up, some would quietly come to us, you could tell where they were, but they couldn't publicly speak out because they were in fear of losing their funding when the federal government hears them say something that perhaps wasn't to their liking. That one just, like, you know, gives you a pain and you got to think that people are dealing with that. So, you know, all the other sector impacts. So the, the only other thing I'll mention is, you know, I, I got a lot of sites blocked on social media, you folks know that, if it's just going to be ugly, I'm not going to be, and, and it's going to be trashing everything we do and everything I say, I'm just not going to do it, it's, it's not worth anybody's mental health or time. So, you know, a couple of folks did on something I posted, they just said, you know, I wouldn't want to be in the room when the vice president is speaking, and that was fine, I was, I was okay with all that, you shouldn't be in there, make sure you spit on it, but just, it was, I think you saw some of those, it was, it was wild. And my answer that I tried to get across was I wasn't there to, to hear him speak, I was there to gauge the response of the audience, because there were thousands in that room, they told us to get there at least an hour and a half early because it would be so packed you won't get in, the room wasn't full, there was a lot of reaction that started with the B and the double O's, then, then the, you know, the clapping, it was, it was really, I was glad I was in that room to hear that. He did say a lot about municipal government and how it's, you know, we're on the ground and, and what municipal government does is really, really important, followed quickly by, we have federal rules and regulations and laws in place and you will not choose between which rules this administration puts forward, you will follow them all. So it was, I guess as some of us were saying, it's, it just sounded like a, like a threat. It was sad, it was sad, the air was heavy, it was a, it was not an easy trip, but what we did was, was well received, we met with the Democratic Mayors Association, we reached, we did reach out to the Republicans, but they didn't get back to us, I think they were busy, and the Canadian Embassy, we did go there, and I actually had friends that, had friends in that room because I've, I've worked with them before, we were just looking at, you know, how, it's, Canada's one thing, Nova Scotia's another, but how as local leaders do we keep this moving forward? Because nothing happens unless it's happening from the ground, I think we all know that. And a lunch with the US, the President of the US Mayor's Commission who was fully on board, they just want to get all this word out to the public and to their colleagues to say, this is important, you better be paying attention, but it's not until the people know what's going on and how it affects us that it's going to get some, some traction. So we'll do follow-ups and see what happens from there, I'm in Quebec, I think from, I don't know, this Monday till Friday, so we'll have follow-up conversations then. So that's, that's what happened down there. There you go. Any questions? You're good? All right, questions for committee chairs, anyone? Anything you want to roll by, anyone? Okay, approval of invoices, that various invoices be approved for payment? Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried, deputy, you're good this week to sign checks and, okay. Date of the next meeting is April the 10th, check that one. I think everyone was, I mean, we're all good on that, April 10th. Okay, and there's nothing in camera that I knew of. We're good? All right, woo, motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Good stuff.